Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. The start of the meeting is being delayed momentarily because of four or five people who have chosen to come in and disrupt the meeting. They've been ordered removed, and as soon as our sergeants address that situation, we'll be ready to begin the meeting of the City Council of Los Angeles and serve the needs of the 4 million people who are waiting for us to begin. Thank you very much for being with us. You're very welcome to be here in City Hall. All right. All right, whoever's shouting out, stop shouting out. All right, we're ready to begin public comment. The directions have already been read into the record, so I'm going to call a number of names. As I call your name, please line up on the left-hand side of the chambers. You do not need to speak in the order that I call you. We'll start with Byron Jose, the initials CCP, Spindler, Tiffany Henyard, the fake name James, Dusty, Annabella Mazariegos, Carmen Resendis. Okay, sir, which name are you using today?
Good morning, Mr. City Attorney. Good morning, Honorable Council President.
Which name are you using?
Good morning, my Mr. City Attorney. Good morning, Honorable Council President.
No, answer my question. Which name are you using?
Good morning, Mr. City Attorney.
So I'm going to ask you one more time, or else we're going to have to move on. Which name did you sign up under? We need to know so that we can keep track of who's spoken and who hasn't. So which name did you sign up under?
Okay. My name is Tiffany Henyer.
Okay. Which items would you like to speak on?
Good morning, Mr. City Attorney. Good morning, Mr. Council President Nuri Martinez. I would like to speak on the item that is open to the public.
One minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item. And again, for everybody who's here and on the phones, the only item that is open for public comment today is item 13. So go ahead. You have one minute for the item. Go ahead. General public comment.
General public comment. I would like to talk about with our LAPD officers. So if I am speaking on general public comment, why do I have to speak on the agenda item? I want to ask our LAPD officers, if I am speaking on the ceasefire piece inside of the City Hall, why that is out of the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council? If I am asking for a Los Angeles community barbecue event inside of the city of Los Angeles, why that is out of the jurisdiction of this council? So I want to ask our LAPD officers, if you were given an order that is out of policy, do you still have to enforce it? If we are talking about number one supporter of LAPD, that's me. However, why you are continue to enforce the order when you are know that order is out of order in itself? I can continue to talk about ceasefire in the City Hall, inside of the City Chamber, that is always out of.
Your time has expired. Please have a seat. Next speaker. Mr. Herman, what name did you sign up under this morning?
I don't remember.
Well, if you would sign up with one name, you would remember. So I assume that you're trying to disrupt this meeting by signing up with multiple names.
Now let me recall for the record. You said Rabbi, then I'm here, right, dickface?
Go ahead. You're going to speak on item 13? Yes?
Yeah, motherfucker.
Okay, 13 and general public comment. Time starts now.
I know how to read. Yeah, justice for all in LA. What is the judiciary duty of the fucking police? Well, Smokey Scan knows what the judiciary issue of the police is. And that MOU is that it's a funding of service paid by we, the people of California, just like Sergeant Clark and that three-inch dick Sergeant Duarte.
So you're off topic already. So let's stick to the topic or go to general public comment.
To include these officers on the new instructions for this fucking amount of money in CD5. Now, don't construe my language and interrupt me, asshole. It's your last day.
You're now definitely off topic, so go to general public comment.
Fine, motherfucker, fine. Let me tell you the reason that we're here. The reason that we fear Spindler and her. The longer I am hypnotized by white privileged niggers, white privileged lawyers, white privileged centers, white privileged council members, and fucking congresspeople, let me give you the reason. LA Police Commissioner Steve Silveroff, a real estate expert involved with the Carter issue in Brentwood and UCLA is the reason why I'm here. The reason that I'm here to point out the crime because of you asshole Armenians, you don't listen because you're a fool, a white nigga fool, Argentina who got fooled by your woman who divorced you because your fat woman is all that you can do.
All right. Your time has expired. Sit down and be quiet. You're disrupting the meeting. I'm ordering you removed pursuant to rule 12. Mr. Herman is ordered removed pursuant to rule 12 for continuing to disrupt the meeting after I instructed him to be quiet. Please remove him from the meeting immediately so that we can continue with our meeting. Mr. Herman, have a great day. Sergeants, he's delaying this meeting. Please get him to the door expeditiously.
Good morning, Speaker. Please give us a minute while we try and get this under control.
No, no, we can't begin. I'm sorry, you're going to have to wait because Armando Herman, Sergeants, is continuing to disrupt this meeting and delay public comment, not just disrupt our work, but prevent other people from being able to speak. So I want him out. All of the people who are waiting to speak cannot speak because of one person, Armando Herman, who's been ordered removed, and I need him to get to the door. All right. Just in case anybody has any doubts, anyone else who disrupts this meeting will be removed immediately, especially if you're interrupting other people's public comment.
Okay, good morning, public comments. My name is Annabella Mazariegos. I do appreciate free speech. I do not like the way he talks, but you know, it's free speech. This is our First Amendment.
Okay, so are you here for general public comment?
Yes, public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes. And I'm talking, you said that we can allow another items, but I'm here because I'm opposed the, yesterday, the Plummer, Plummer Committee, they approved the USC, the USC project, which is just only one building now, but it's a, it's a greedy university that is going to have a major, the tech, tech project that is going to take a lot of land from, from the neighborhood Boyle Heights and, and city terrace. This is the beginning of the gentrification of USC, exactly the way they did it in South LA, they're coming to Boyle Heights, District 14. We do not appreciate that you guys come to us when it's election time, but you don't care about the necessities of our town. Every town has gentrification. We are really suffering with all this displacement. It's not fair. You come in November for our vote and you don't take care of us.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Buenos, Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Carmen Resendis.
Good morning, my name is Carmen Resendis.
Vivo en Boyle Heights por más de quince años.
And I lived in Boyle Heights for over 15 years.
Y hoy estoy aquí porque estoy preocupada.
And I'm here today because I am worried.
Porque aprobaron el proyecto, el proyecto de USC.
Because the project of USC was approved.
Y no, y no se nos informa la comunidad de, de las consecuencias de lo, de lo que esto trae. Se nos está hablando?
We are not being informed of all the consequences that they will, this will bring forth.
De los beneficios que trae, pero no se nos trae, no se nos informa a costa de qué.
So they told us about the benefits that this brings, but they don't tell us what is the cost.
La universidad ya nos ha afectado con la vivienda desde hace años.
The university has already affected us with them leaving and for many years.
Y este proyecto nos afect, nos afectará por más tiempo para nosotros y nuestros hijos.
This will affect us for long time, not only us, but our children.
No estamos de acuerdo que nuestro concejal no nos apoye en esto.
We do not agree that our council member do not support us on this.
Debe de sentarse e informar a la comunidad de, de lo que estos proyectos ambiciosos traen a nuestra comunidad.
He should sit with our community and let us know what are the issues that these greedy projects bring to our community.
Gracias.
Good morning.
Hello, this is Tom.
We can hear you.
Byron Jose, City Nine, City Eight constituent, here speaking as a resident over the last 25 years in LA.
General public comment.
Speaking on 13, one and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please go ahead.
Thank you. There are two agenda items today, transferring funds to the LAPD. We had Kevin's campaigning on the floor. I know Kocorian has a hard time understanding election laws and your campaigning via email, but anyway, so hopefully this is the last time that this meeting devolves to what you continue to see, the circus that it is, thanks to Kocorian's failed leadership. As we turn the page, right, as we move on to another era of LA politics, you will leave behind the following legacy, Kocorian, a legacy of criminalizing and terrorizing our neighbors experiencing homelessness, silencing the public from engaging in, in these meetings by criminalizing people, throwing people out of whim, by funding militias. That's the next, one of the agenda items that your city council, under your leadership, has devolved to, as well as a deficit, a deficit, a historic deficit, because you continue to fund the police. So anyways, we moved on from Nury's failed leadership. Hopefully, the other people continue to be voted out or indicted out of office. Hopefully, we'll have two new seats in a couple of months unless Kevin wants to resign soon. You already lost the primary, Kevin, so why are you waiting to lose the general? But anyways, so through all of that, through this era of corruption, repugnant abuse of power, and failure, Kocorian, I mainly came here to give, express to you a very sincere message that I think reflects what the residents of Los Angeles really want to communicate to you after your failure of two years and as president. Fuck you.
Next speaker.
It's a live one. Yes.
Good morning. So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general.
All items and general comment. So thank you to KKK Katie for all of your police funds to get rid of homeless criminals and thieves off of your streets. How come John Lee can't do this?
No, because he's under investigation.
How come Unisys can't do it?
She's busy trying to get that McDonald's app for her cheeseburger today.
Yes, 50 cents. Yes, and that's the problem, isn't it? You homeless lovers like Fatso Unisys and Moni Cow, Hugo Stalin.
Speak to LAPD funding in CD5.
Right, I'm trying to compliment KKK Katie, believe it or not, Armenian.
CD5.
I'm complimenting her, yes. I'm saying, if you let me speak, that she's doing a good job. Let's give her a hand. Yeah, see, I will always tell you, council criminals, I mean council members, when you're doing a good job. Now for my general comment.
General public comment.
So long, you filthy, dirty scumbag Armenian. So long, like your first wife told you to so long, you stupid ass. Weren't you married? You couldn't learn Spanish in that first marriage? Is that the problem there?
That has nothing to do with the jurisdiction of this council.
Yes, it does.
So speak to the work of this council.
You're a fucking failure.
Okay.
You're a failure, that's the point. You're a no-good, dirty, pink-skinned fascist Armenian terrorist cocksucker. You have a big, fat wife and a retarded family.
Okay, you're done. You're done. Your time has expired. Have a good day. Mr. Spindler is continuing to disrupt the meeting. He's ordered removed pursuant to rule 12. Get him out of my chambers. You're done. You're done.
Mr. Spindler, you've been ruled off topic by the council president.
You're removed. You're continuing to disrupt the meeting after being ordered removed. So sergeants, deal with him accordingly, please. Have a good day. Have a good day, Spindler. You're done.
Mr. Spindler, you have been ordered removed. Please move.
Mr. Spindler is now delaying public comment after having been ordered removed. Mr. Quan, I know you're going to say you don't mind, but unfortunately, we can't have this disruption while people are, are speaking. So I just need to ask you to wait for a minute. Spindler, hurry up and leave our chambers so we can go on with the meeting. For the record, Mr. Spindler is continuing to shout out from the back of the chambers, still hasn't managed to find his way to the door despite our sergeants' best efforts. So we'll just all wait. The city of Los Angeles will wait for Wayne Spindler to complete his rant.
All right. And for members on the phones, if it's not clear, we still cannot resume public comment because Mr. Spindler has still not exited the room.
All right. Mr. Quan, good morning.
Good morning. Like to speak on 13 and general public comment.
Good morning. So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
What are we up to? Half a dozen ejections so far?
That's not on topic. Go ahead.
It kind of is on topic, and I'll get to that. So for this item, we have Councilmember Yaroslavsky, who is reconciling with a bunch of reactionaries in her district threatening to recall her, so we've got to throw some red meat to LAPD, give him some of that chum. John Lee knows that move. A couple hundred thousand dollars for LAPD. And I just wonder, maybe if we didn't have such a hostile environment here with a council president ranting, berating, yelling, inflaming tensions, we wouldn't need as many cops here. And then we could have more cops over in Yaroslavsky's district. It's just important to consider that. And for Councilmember Yaroslavsky, wherever you are, you've got nothing to fear. You won big. Councilmember Rahman proved that you don't need to give in to the reactionaries. For my general public comment.
Go ahead.
I was there for Herb's last day as president, but not Nury's due to the sudden nature of events, but I got to come out to honor the second worst council president we've had in the last three, four decades. Looking forward to having a council president kind of like Herb Wesson, who could actually preside over a meeting without losing their shit and yelling at people. Really impressive to see how you hid your temper for like 12 years. Yeah, there's this notion this council president has that I'm just a hater, that I just love hating on everything. And really, you might recall, some of you have been around, I didn't used to be this way. The first few years around here, I wasn't this way. It wasn't until Nury, until this guy showed how much they disdain the public and wanted to go to absurd lengths to quash public comment. And I just hope this council steps away from that because all of the mess being left behind by that rain is still hanging around, still out for, for some nibbling. So I wish you the best.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Lewis. I'm with Neighborhood Council Valley Village. I'm here to thank Council President Al Kocorian for helping the San Fernando Valley, especially Valley Village, maneuver through first the 2019 decline of the economy with city services in our community, dealing with the homeless crisis with the first tiny villages, the tiny homes in the city of Los Angeles, keeping CD2 safe and protected and informed during the pandemic, his support of planning and land use issues in Valley Village, the coastal, the 15 coastal oak trees at North Hollywood High School that he helped us get historical status, the sound walls along the 170 after years and years and years of waiting, the stolen copper wire thups, the 180 trees planted in Valley Village, the 50 trees planted in Valley Village Park, the murals and 40-plus art boxes around Valley Village. Can I continue?
Thank you. I'm afraid not. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
For your service and thank you to your staff, especially Jeff, Shannon, Carl.
General public comment.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
My name is Samantha. I am here with the Eastside Leads Coalition to express my anger and disdain on behalf of tenants who have been affected by USC and Council District 14 selling out the Eastside community. As the youngest person in this room and as a first-generation college student, I recognize that colleges like USC are not an option for me. I cannot trust a beast who proactively ignores and displaces historically systemically underserved communities like mine. There is no accountability, nor has there been since 1985, for USC as it continues to take advantage of marginalized communities. Trust is destroyed. The main argument is that these projects will promote health and advance the health, yet you fail to realize that we are surrounded by freeways, food deserts, and lack of mental health resources. I expect to die from cancer. My mother has cancer. What the fuck is USC going to do for me? Shame on racist CD14, shame on USC, and they are not our savior. They are the displacer.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Topic point number 13 and general comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item.
Good morning, honorable team. My name is Julian Alexander Makara of Adream Foundation or adreamnow.org. Spent yesterday afternoon contacting your offices once more to see we can communicate the value program. This document would send over to each one of your offices, the city attorney and the clerk's office, including the mayor, 9:56 on Sunday. This document provides an, a plan relative to the goal that's being taken place here on topic number 13, $200,000. Thank you for laughing right now, Mr. Harrison Dawson, as I'm speaking. You guys were doing wonderful earlier. In respects to the amount of money being invested either to support, as the discrepancy that I was bringing up earlier, are you going to promote a more proactive LAPD force or a more communal force? Now, do you want more incarcerations and more of what's taking place, or do you want more accessibility? Please look at the value program. Now for my public general comment. What the value program is, because when I'm speaking to your staff, much like what is taking place here, they're showing ignorance. So, and excuse me for these words, because they are harsh. They are representative of the constituents that, like that young lady, when your office asks, who am I helping? That young lady, her entire family and her need help. That is who I'm helping. And if you are all claiming immigrant status, I, my father was this, my mother, I haven't stated anything of my family. I blow you out of the water. Can we please support each other? None of you have called. Ms. Hernandez, you should have been the first one to respond because you are my council representative and Mr. Kevin De Leon. Because of your negligence, the entire city of Los Angeles is now dealing with my prudence. You are laughing, all three of you, with your hands up. This is being recorded. I didn't, I wasn't given a golf club on my freshman year.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, hi, DanielGustard.substack.com. I'm just going to go to general public comment today.
Okay, good morning. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Great. Reminder to Mr. Kocorian, this is not my chambers, it's ours. And that's a perfect example of your self-absorbed arrogance. It's our chambers, not your chambers, Mr. Kocorian. You stole a billion dollars from Recreation and Parks since 2010 to plug budget holes as the Chair of Budget and Finance. That is your legacy for stealing a billion dollars. And sue me for defamation, Mr. Kocorian, if I'm lying. You stole a billion dollars from the people who use the parks most, which is elderly, children, and the poor. You displaced homeless people from shelters in your district and across the city by putting in illegal immigrants from China, Cuba, and Venezuela. That's your legacy, sir. By the way, you are risking danger.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. Next caller, please.
Yes, my name is Petty Pinkface, Armenian dictator, and I'm a Smokey Scan viewer.
So the only item open for comment is item 13, which deals with Council District Five. Just for the record, Figueroa is not in Council District Five. Go ahead.
Noted, the Armenian dictator. I was just about to let you out then.
Do you want to speak on item 13?
Anyway, shout out to the Smokey Scan community. Yes, indeed. Why not? Hell. And aren't you supposed to be cleaning out your desk or something there, brother?
You're not speaking on item 13. Last warning.
Well, damn, brother. All right, anyway, shout out to the Smokey Scan community. The other day, I was down on Figueroa.
Okay, just put him to general public comment. You'll have one minute for general public comment, and what you did on Figueroa is not within the jurisdiction of this council.
Well, damn, Armenian dictator. All right, well, anyway, shout out to the Smokey Scan community. We're having a good meeting as usual there. And I like to say that, you know, you know, I think it's a good day we got today, today, brother, because, you know, after the day, you don't have to turn your heel on your TV up and down anymore because it's Petty Pinkface dictator here blowing out your damn TV with his bright-ass, pink-ass face there, looking like a little prick there. But good day. Hopefully, we have a few chases this, chases this week. You know, it's been kind of low on the, on the chase side, you know, after this pink-faced dictator leaves there, we'll maybe have a, you know, a better meeting and you'll have a good one.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Brocklanders, Los Angeles, private investigator.
Good morning. Which items?
Afternoon nerds and virgins. Pete, this is our chambers, not yours. Items 13 and a general public comment.
So we have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead with the items first.
All right, 13, instead of pulling more money out of the budget so corrupt people come buy vote, maybe they should have a fundraiser and sell cookies like the Girl Scout. We could do some Smokey Scan-themed snickerdoodles, Figueroa Baby Batter Newtons, and Lady Red Sweet Velvet Bee. I'll be selling them Friday after the meeting at the 7-Eleven on Figueroa.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and speak to the agenda item, or we can move you to general public comment.
I was talking about the cops and you guys, you know, trying to use the city's money to buy votes, but I'll go to general public comment.
Okay, one minute.
Oh, thank you. I want to be clear. I don't condone or support the harassment, violence, or threats of violence towards dwarfs, midgets, or Frito Bandidos. I can't blame people for calling a number that is announced online during a council meeting or telling them that they shouldn't call. Just like I can't fault the ladies that email me pictures of their boobies at Brocklanders or like guy at humor.com.
So this is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, so you need to connect it to something that's within.
As it, as it refers to the council, just listen up, genius. Peter, as mad as you got for people calling into the council and calling you out for not doing a 9/11 tribute at the beginning of the meeting, if there's nothing wrong with doing things like a tribute to people at the end of the meeting, why didn't you have that guy with the cocaine eyes jumping around, come in and do his thing after public comment today? I mean, seems mighty hypocritical of you. Word of the day, Venice Bandidos vacuum. It refers to a glory hall. Word of the day, Venice Bandidos vacuum, it refers to a glory hole in Venice.
Okay, that's it, next caller, please.
All right, fuck you, Paul Corian, I will speak on the item and general public comment.
So you have one minute for item number thirteen and one minute for general, please begin with the item.
All right, so the item is a motion from Katie Yaroslavsky for police funding, LAPD funding and CD5. Fuck that, give more money to the LAPD. Of course, it's also CD5 from Yaroslavsky. I hope none of this money is going to be used to attack, have LAPD come attack anti-genocide protesters, and then, you know, create a campaign to claim that those anti-genocide protesters were antisemitic when they were protesting genocide and not antisem, not the existence of Jewish people. So no on police funding and CD5, especially if it's going to be used to attack anti-genocide protesters. Now let's go on to general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
All right, so today is the last day of the worst council president we've had, Paul Corian, who nobody liked at all. This has been a real disaster the last year, I mean, the last two years. And it's just every day, and you know, today, he began the meeting, the way he began his meetings and when he started, by just absolutely losing his shit and yelling at people just nonstop during the protest in the chamber. I mean, and the reason Paul was ever doing this was to defend and protect a bunch of racists, of which he is as well, a bunch of racists who worked to gerrymander the redistricting process compared to a black child to a handbag. And that's Paul Corian, and we've seen a massive reduction in the ability to provide input, fuck you, Paul. Shout out to the DJ Corian guy.
So your time is expired, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please proceed.
Hi there, my name is Fernanda, I'd like to do general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Fernanda, I'm the president of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. Yesterday, I presented a community impact statement in person at the plum meeting for item number three. When the meeting was over, I was approached from behind and threatened by David Gallivie, the Senior Director of Community Relations for USC. He bent down and said into my ear, do not worry, we are going to take over your neighborhood council. This is an unprovoked threat to a public elected official. David Gallivie is a paid USC representative that is supposed to be working with the community on community benefits, and I'm calling for his immediate resignation. I felt very unsafe and very targeted, his presence in our community is only going to further perpetuate the harm that USC has caused. I do not take these threats lightly, this was frightening, belittling, and honestly, a really triggering experience, and one that I did not ever expect when presenting at chambers. I will be escalating this to the utmost degree, nobody should be tolerant of threats and such tactics.
So speaker, your time has expired, thank you.
Hi, my name's Estella with Gasfly Herald, I'd like to speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
So you have one minute for item thirteen and one minute for general public comment, please begin with the item, go ahead.
Thank you, for item thirteen, let's just call item thirteen what it is. In District Five, we have University of California, Century City, Westwood, very rich areas. So let's just call item thirteen what it is, let's call item thirteen what it is, and it is a bribe, item thirteen is a bribe. Now, why would Los Angeles City Council want to bribe with item thirteen? Why would they want to bribe the LAPD, maybe because they're acting like tyrants in their council meeting and banishing the public for simply accessing their First Amendment, right? Maybe item thirteen is a bribe.
This is not related to item thirteen specifically, you're welcome to continue during general.
Excuse me, no, I am speaking about item thirteen, you're not going to interrupt me, I want my time back. Let's call it a bribe, item thirteen, so that they can bribe their constituents to look past their constitutional violation. Let's call item thirteen a bribe to consolidate their LAPD force, to have them, have their back instead of the people who they are paid to protect. Let's call item thirteen a bribe, maybe you should put those LAPD officers on Figueroa Street, how about that? Okay, I'll go to general public comment.
So you're already in your general public comment, but you can continue.
No, I was on item thirteen, and you will, you will give me my minute, thank you. Now doxing Herman, doxing Mr. Spindler, that is illegal. We are all now witnesses of a crime, and if you vote yes on item thirteen, you will be voting for a bribe participating in that crime. Thank you for my time, God bless you, have a beautiful day.
I look forward to see what you will be doing in the future, but thank you so much for your service, and more important, for your friendship, especially as we prepare to go into some other very challenging times in our city. Thank you, Paul Corian, President of the City Council.
Thank you very much, Mayor Bass.
You came in a time that was very tumultuous, and where there was a lot of trepidation about myself and other colleagues coming on board on, you know, people thought that we were crazy, that, you know, all sorts of things, they were scared. But you led us in a way that allowed us to stand for what we believe in, for democracy to continue, for conversations to happen. There are conversations that have happened in this chamber under your leadership that have never happened before because you allowed it to happen. So I'm grateful for that space, the opportunity to represent my community to the fullest possible way that I can, and for your expertise in helping me also navigate how to put motions forward, and particularly motions to help our district get through crises. So I appreciate that and all the opportunities you've given us. I look forward to see what the next steps are you're going to take in your leadership, the Olympics are coming, you know, we need that expertise in that space. And I look forward to that continued partnership and moving our city into a better place, even though it's going to require us to go through some rosebushes, but on the other side are going to be roses, so I look forward to seeing you in that role, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I certainly am grateful for your open-door policy and your team that spends time talking to our teams so that we have a greater understanding of direction and leadership. I also want to say that not only did Paul trust me to be a voting member, but he trusted me to ride on a float down King Boulevard in the King Parade, and his first year, he was holding on like this, like, oh my God. You know how much longer, and his second year, he was actually dancing. And so what I learned is that Paul likes music, and he likes to have a good time, too. So it's a good balance in a leader when you see that, you know, you understand the construct, but you also understand that you have to balance it on being social and having fun. I want to thank you for trusting me and for your leadership.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you very much. But I do want to just, first of all, express my deep gratitude to all of you. When I was elected council president, I, you know, it wasn't a time to set out a big policy agenda. You know, like when Herb became president, he said, here's what we're going to do in the next two years, and we set about doing that. That was not that time, in October of 2022, when this city was reeling in crisis. And as I saw it, I had three basic responsibilities to you. My responsibility was to help us to stabilize the ship in one of the stormiest times we've had in the history of the city, to begin the process of restoring confidence in this institution and in government writ large. And maybe most important, to uplift each of you and to help each of you do your job more effectively, even if we did disagree, because I very strongly believe that if each of the fifteen of us is given the opportunity to represent the people that elect us to the best of our abilities, then the city as a whole advances forward more effectively. It's not up to the person who sits in this desk to tell you what you should do or how you should represent your constituents. So those were my three jobs, and when it comes to stabilizing the ship, you saw a snippet on that video of what it was like when we were starting out, some of you have mentioned it. But it's easy to forget, our memories are short, I mean, I'm already forgetting how difficult life was during COVID, it seems like. Don't forget what things were like in October of 22, because it is no exaggeration to say that we were in danger. We were personally in danger, this chambers was in danger, there were members who were being harassed on a daily basis, there were people camped out in members' front yards. It was a very difficult time of division in our city, and there were times when I doubted whether or not the council could continue to function as a legislative body. And yet, through, with patience and with the infusion of our new members who have helped us to set a new course, and with all of your patience, we were able to see ourselves through those times, and we no longer live in that environment. And I think, as Mr. Soto Martinez said, I think in that respect, we can be an example for the rest of the country as well, in a time when our politics are so riven, and the country is so divided, and partisanship is so sharp, and there's no tolerance for anybody who disagrees with you in the slightest, even in the United States Congress. You know, we've risen above that here, and I so appreciate all of you for playing your part in that.
I rise to adjourn in the memory of an amazing man, Pinchas Heisler, who was also the father of one of my very active constituents in Tarzana, Iran Heisler. Over the past, over the span of ninety-three years, Pinchas Heisler lived an extraordinary life. He was born in 1931 in Vienna, Austria. He came into this world amidst turbulent times, his family sensing the looming threat of persecution relocated to Israel in 1934, thirty-four, just before Hitler's rise to power. This early move shaped the path of a young boy who would go on to live a life of incredible service and adventure. At seventeen, he joined the Israeli Air Force, answering the call of duty during Israel's fight for independence in 1948. He graduated as a pilot and fought courageously for his nation's freedom. In 1964, his life took another exciting turn when he became a reporter covering the New York World's Fair in Queens, New York. His work in journalism brought him closer to the wider world, a theme that would echo throughout his life. In 1965, he joined ILA, the Israeli airline, where he worked until his retirement in 2012. As part of the air crew, he traveled all around the world to breathtaking destinations, and he had a love of travel that was infectious and something he shared with his family. His son fondly recounted his bar mitzvah trip going to a safari in Africa. And in 1973, they were traveling to Hawaii when news broke of the war in Israel. Without hesitation, he cut his vacation short, and he returned home to stand with his friends and country because he couldn't bear the thought of relaxing on a beach while his country was under attack. Pinchas Heisler was a man of many passions, he played tennis daily right up until the age of eighty-five, when he chose to stop so he could care for his beloved wife, putting her needs above all else. His love for her was a defining part of his life, and they shared seventy beautiful years together. In his seventies, he battled bladder cancer, he won, he showed the resilience of his character, but then twenty years later faced dementia and eventually Alzheimer's. But even in those final days, he never forgot the faces of his loved ones. His strength and grace through adversity inspired all who knew him, he was always proud of his family, particularly his children. He took great joy in seeing his son, Iran, volunteer and contribute to the Tarzana community and beyond, something he encouraged all of his children to do. He loved in Tarzana going to savor his favorite cabbage soup at Mort's Deli and share stories with those he loved. He lived a life of service, love, and unwavering dedication, we will forever cherish his memory. May Pinchas Heisler rest in peace.